The three minutes is up if everybody's ready and we'll bring it to a vote.
Nine in favour, one abstaining, twenty-six against.
So the motion fails. Now to, we're on item 21, report of committees, B, report of the Houth Malahide Services. Motion to agree the... No, we don't. The status quo was maintained. It's a status quo. We don't need to agree that report because the status quo is the status quo. It was just a question to continue. So, report of the committee, 21B, report of Houth Malahide Services, B area committee meeting held on Wednesday the 6th of November 2024. councillor Tormey, seconded councillor Heady. I see, report of Blanchardstown, Mulhuder, Castleknock, Anger Services, B area committee meeting held on Thursday the 7th of November 2024. Proposed councillor Dennison, seconded councillor McCamley. Item number 22, authorisation of the overdraft accommodation 2025.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, it's just for the members to approve the renewal of our overdraft facility with the bank. Just needs agreement.
Agreed, agreed. Proposed disposal of properties, 23A, notice of proposed disposal of land, including the grant of a right of way and the grant of a way leave to the rear of Whitestown Avenue, Dublin 15 to Gas Networks Ireland, proposed.
Mayor, just if I could come in.
Sorry, yeah.
Just councillor Eddie has missed the area committee meeting and he's asking a couple of questions, so if we could just adjourn this for a few minutes and bring it back later on.
Yeah, okay, adjourned. Proposed disposal of properties, item B, it's proposed to defer that item until next month with the agreement of the meeting. Agreed. 23C, notice of proposed grant of way leave at Churchfields, Mulhuder, Dublin 15 to Iskay Aaron. Proposed councillor Dennison, seconded councillor McCamley. And then we'll come back to that. Declaration of Roads, item 24, Williams Estate, Anger, Dublin 15. Proposed councillor Dennison. 23B, there was a, I just said there was a proposal. Sorry, 23A.
Sorry, Mayor, A was just an adjournment for a few minutes while we brief councillor Eddie, B is a deferral to next month.
And 23D, proposed simple, fee simple interest of dwellings, sorry. Proposer, proposed councillor O'Brien, seconded councillor Dennison, agreed. And declaration of roads, item 24, A, Williams Estate, Anger, Dublin 15. Proposed councillor Dennison, seconded councillor Donnelly, agreed. Declaration of Roads, B, Lily's Estate, Dublin 15. Proposed councillor Dennison, seconded councillor Donnelly. Item 25, the Strategic Policy Committee, SPC, membership 2024 to 2029. Can we have the draft up there? Okay, so this has been circulated, it has been agreed at the CPG. Just to be very clear, because councillor Bowlin quite rightly raised it about how the process has happened to get us this far, the decision will only and can only be made by all of the councillors at this meeting. As part of the proposal to come up and save time, rather than going through a laborious process of figuring it out all on the floor, corporate services assisted with an initial draft, I then took it upon myself to look at that draft, to consult with people on the basis of some improvements to it, and we come to the draft that we have here now. So we can propose the draft as is, the alternative then is for people to make proposed amendments to the SPC, but I think it's a very strong SPC scheme and I think it is as good a balance of gender as we could achieve and parties, and most people are getting their first or second choice, so. Councillor Donnelly has put in a motion. Do you want to take that motion? Yes. Yeah, so this motion is not in order for this, and the reason it's not in order is because it's the membership of the SPC we're presenting today. For this to have come up previously, we would have to have it at the establishment of the SPCs. So what we have is, and I'm not even sure how the Dehant piece went there, because you still have to agree the actual piece on it, so I'm taking the ruling that this isn't in order in relation to the membership of the SPC. Councillor Gairon.
Mayor, just that I don't understand, when you said that there was a list prepared and it went to you, and you had a look at it and you consulted with people to improve it, did you consult with all the people, you might have moved around, or did you just consult with certain people?
So I consulted with a wide range of different people, and everybody who was, previously anybody who had been affected that didn't get a first choice, had been told by corporate services, there was people, there was an ongoing discussion between corporate services and different people in relation to things, and lots of different people had made submissions as to what would there. In relation to my consultation, I rang a wide range of people, different groups, and I also rang the two people who were most adversely affected, who were most adversely didn't receive the choices, and I rang a wide range of other people who were changed and they were happy with those changes. So I'm very happy that this is the best that I can certainly do, but I would also point out there may well be some changes in terms of personnel following the 29th of November, and there have and always are changes within the term of where people decide sometimes they wish to exchange SPCs or sit in a different one. So there will be opportunities for people to move with agreement of the council and with other councillors. But in the interests of time, I would propose that we agree to adopt this SPC membership. Proposed. Councillor Donnelly.
Thank you. I don't understand why the motion is out of order, because the SPC chairs were agreed as designated, their actual position on the committees is part of disagreement today, so therefore that is what I am suggesting the Dehant system for. I do think, I think the way these committees are decided is behind closed doors, I think, isn't fair, it's not transparent, I think we could do better, and I certainly wouldn't be in favour of the current system, and I think it needs a complete overhaul. I don't think the CPG should be deciding or should have that deciding factor on who sits in which SPC, and it may be done with the best of intentions, but we all have different perceptions of what is best for the committees and for the residents of Fingal, and for all of the 40 elected representatives in this chamber who all have an equal mandate.
Councillor Mulville.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to first you to commend your work in deciding the membership and all that stuff, it's complicated, but I think that's been done quite fairly and to certainly support that aspect of it. I think councillor Donnelly's point about the Dehant system and allocating which chairs, which councillors get to be chairs using the Dehant system will be much fair, and it's something that we should be doing in this council. Just also in terms of the motion, we just agreed the motion of the OMP, and to thank obviously the members for supporting that, that we would have the SPC's meetings open to the public, open to the media, just looking to know, will that be implemented? Like, when does that standing order come into effect? Is that going to come into effect from now, or do we have to bring that back to a future, a full council meeting? Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Mulligan.
Thanks, Mayor. And just for clarity, you mentioned that people who were materially affected by their groupings were notified by either yourself or the executive. I didn't mention the grouping that I'm currently in, in order of my four preferences that I gave, in any way, shape or form. I don't, I'm happy to sit on whatever SPC I'm asked to sit on, but it wasn't one of the four that I picked when asked to choose my preferences, nor was I contacted regarding my membership of the SPC prior to receiving the email telling me what SPC I was a member of. And just for clarity, because I think it's unfair to make a statement that reflects transparency across the board, that may not have happened. Thank you.
Councillor Dennison.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the discussion at the OMP, the comments of councillor Mulville there, could I suggest to the chief executive that she advise the members of the SPC who are not councillors, that, you know, the public may be invited to these meetings and that they will be subject to media scrutiny as well, because not everybody will be expecting that.
So there's a couple of questions there which I'll take, so let's be very clear, this decision is not taking place in any shape or form in backrooms. There's any individual, I'm very happy to take alternative membership schemes from anybody here who wishes to present an alternative membership scheme. I want to apologise to councillor Mulligan publicly. My understanding was that because I didn't forensically go through each one, it was where I was informed that somebody hadn't received those choices. So again, that watch exposes a weakness in the SPC, one more person has been affected than I thought. I'm happy to, again, like I said, if there are changes people want to make, but I still propose that overall it's a good SPC membership scheme. To be clear, it's, you know, I have an eye on making sure that we can try and get the business of the council done quickly as we can, and I didn't want to try and spend an inordinate amount of time with motions for and against who's going on which committee, which is the alternative way that we can proceed, or somebody can present a fully formed alternative piece. What I'm comfortable with is that this will have the support of the majority of members, and that was the prime objective. And at the same time, I spoke not just to people within the group, I spoke to people to make sure that they were, other people to make sure that they were happy with choices or to inform them of reasons for me making my changes. So the only person, it came to the CPG and was discussed, but the only person standing over this is not corporate services, me, and if anybody wants to propose an alternative one, that's another way we can make that decision. So I'm happy to propose this and have it seconded, or seconded by councillor O'Brien, and we'll take a vote unless there are amendments. Well, we're, agreed? Agreed. So where are we now? Item 26, the Draft Travel Accommodation Programme 2025 to 2029.
Thanks, Mayor. Councillors, we're bringing forward the Draft Travel Accommodation Programme for the next five years. We've just completed the previous programme. We published the draft on, or we circulated the draft on consultation earlier this year, we got a number of submissions back in, we've circulated summaries of those submissions and amended the draft as appropriate. I'd like to thank Liam Burke, John Kernan and Patricia O'Keefe from our Traveller Management Programme, who've put in a lot of work, both in developing this document and this plan, and on a day-to-day basis. Also like to acknowledge the work of our architects department, we've done, it's set out in the plan, you'll see the amount of work that has taken place over the last few years. It's, it can be a challenging environment to work in, in terms of working on live sites with, you know, trying to manage the tenancies without too much disruption whilst undertaking construction works, but the team have undertaken a significant body of work over the last few years. We have another busy programme here for the next few years, and Liam and Joan will take you through the proposal in a bit more detail. Thank you.
Okay, just to give some legislative background there, local authorities are required to adopt a five-year traveller accommodation programme, according to the Housing Traveller Accommodation Act 1998, and the adoption of the programme is a reserve function of the elected members. So during July and August, we had a statutory public consultation process, received eight submissions, there's set out there a circulated report on those, happy enough that the vast bulk of submissions made are covered off in the plan insofar as we're in a position to do that and we've reported on those in the documents circulated. Let's just, to give you a review of the five years on the work that's taken place, which is pretty significant, closing Collinsdown Park outside the airport and providing alternative accommodation to 14 families, the construction of a new seven-house group housing scheme at Baskin Green, upgrading works and refurbishment works to various sites, Parzicstown, Meeks Town, Finglis, Philomenas Court and Park, a very comprehensive refurbishment works programme to St Bridget's Lawns, it was worked to an occupied site, which was particularly challenging but very successful, refurbishment to Holleside base at Mary's Holton site, group house at Listen Hall Green, retrofit works to 12 of the 14 houses there, upgrading of the wastewater treatment plant at Listen Hall, works to heating systems in our land, Scaries, Moin Park and Bald Isle, to bays at St McCollans Park and to the community centre at St McCollans Park. Just to mention Covid-19, obviously it's behind us now thankfully, but a significant amount of work carried out during that time, travellers were identified as a particularly vulnerable group, and I'd like to commend my own team and colleagues from the county architects department for continuing to provide services to traveller citizens during that difficult time. There's some examples there, we provide caravan loans to traveller citizens, refurbishment works to a house at Meeks Town and Finglis, and that's the new group housing scheme at Baskin. And then some of the items set out in the new programme, continuing to upgrade our barn lodge, propose full refurb, Billshelly Park, Finglis, Kappa, provision of a group housing scheme, Dubur likewise, Gardner's Hill refurbishment, continued work at Meeks Town and Finglis, and in Moin Park, refurbished bays and constructing a new caretaker's house, Parzicstown, new scheme at NCT, Salo Green, St Mary's Holton site, again, St Philomenas Court and Park, there's provision there for a new scheme at Houth Road, Morgan Place, Castleknock, bathroom upgrading works, and again in Matt Lane. So there's a mix of new builds and refurb works in the new programme of provision. So as always, we're very conscious of the fire safety aspect specifically in all the stock, but I suppose with a specific focus around the traveller-specific site. So we're in regular consultation with the Dublin Fire Brigade, regular inspections on the sites, provision of carbon, smoke alarms, fire blankets to the mobiles and caravans, provision of fire extinguishers on the sites, and the offer of fire safety training to residents living in traveller-specific accommodation. So bearing all of that in mind, I would respectfully put the Traveller Accommodation Plan, the draft plan, to you for adoption.
Councillor Newman.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to congratulate Mr Burke for all his efforts on behalf of all the communities of Fingal, travellers included, and just want to pass on with, you know, congratulations and thanks to the team that worked with you on their behalf. Just one question on all the works that we see going up there, do we have a time schedule for where I'm going and what will be completed and when? Thank you.
Councillor Hanifey.
Thank you, and I want to thank the CEO and thank Liam and Cole for the development plan. I was speaking to some members of the travelling community, and they are in support of the plan because any issues they have have been addressed in the submissions received, but I want to acknowledge and commend the work that has been done on the ground by everybody, Liam, Joan and all the crew, and I also want to acknowledge the work which is and which will be carried out in the future, and help in times with so many issues, the after-hours calls, the calling out of weekends and everything, so I just credit where it's due, and on behalf of everyone, thank you so much.
Councillor Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Mr Burke and team in terms of putting this together. I just did notice in terms of the statutory public consultation process, in the report itself, it doesn't mention that Focus Ireland made a contribution, whereas it does in your cover note, so there might be an omission there that Focus Ireland would like to see in it, so. Thank you.
Councillor Coppins.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so I just wanted to make the point that obviously there's been decades-long discrimination and neglect of the traveller community, and now it's compounded by the housing crisis that's been going on for a decade, because travellers are suffering the brunt of that because they find it much more difficult to get private rented accommodation than, you know, settle people, and it's hard enough for anybody else, but particularly hard for them. So my own feedback from the local travelling community was that while they were, you know, supportive of the things that were in the plan, I think there was a demoralisation as well, because they felt that the plan was probably similar to plans before and that so much more is needed, and I recognise that an awful lot of the things that are needed aren't necessarily within the scope of the plan. So I take on board, you know, from talking to Mr Burke, that every effort will be made to try to, you know, bring in some of the other issues, and I know points have been made about apprenticeships, and I think that that's very welcome. And hopefully on the Traveller Accommodation Committee, we can make headway, I would just appeal to the council and the state to do everything, to engage, and it's not always easy to engage with people on the margins, I absolutely accept that, but to engage with the travelling community as much as we possibly can because of that, you know, particular neglect that they felt, and we all know that there's been the underspending of budgets and so on by local authorities nationally over the last number of years, so, yeah, that's it.
Councillor Graves.
Happy to support the programme, it's, there's a lot to get done over four years, it's ambitious, but I've no doubt it'll be done, and congratulations to Liam and the team. Just one question, and I'm delighted to see the Salo Green, NCT, houses on it, is there a timeframe from when they'll be delivered? I know they'll be delighted, but just wondering how long it's going to take.
Councillor Butler.
Please, to thank Liam and the team for their work on this, and also, as he says, their work over Covid. Yeah, thank you, much appreciated.
Councillor Quinn.
So I want to thank Liam and the team for the work that's been under taking in this. There is an opportunity coming up there where we have our budgets, where we can look to allocate more funding to this work done by Liam and the team, so we can go even further. Just in relation to Gardner's Hill, just looking for a timeline on the proposed works. Thanks very much.
Councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, Liam, for your work on this. I know we've come a long way in terms of the discrimination against travellers, and it's good to see that we're coming a bit further, but we've a long way to go. I just want to ask specifically around the Moin Park, I know when I was growing up, Moin Park was in much better condition, and it's in quite bad condition now, I'm just wondering if the three bays and the refurbishment of three bays is enough, and if we have any plans to do something more around the site, and specifically I'm talking about the regional park that's planned, the racecourse regional park which leads up to it, and I know there had been previous discussions about how we could marry the heritage of the travelling community and the heritage of the racecourse there, specifically around the keeping of horses and stables there, and just the Houth Road plans, the location of the five homes and when they'll be delivered. Thank you.
Councillor Gairon.
I'm not going to thank Liam because if anybody else does, people will think he's retiring. You know what, the years go by and they go by very quickly, and I remember looking at the 1924 plan, and an awful lot was achieved of that, and I think that is a credit to Fingal, particularly during Covid, and I know from engaging with travellers and during the canvas and everything else, there's a huge regard for the relationship that Fingal enjoys with the travelling community within Fingal, and I also know that we do see some of them who wish to, who are on housing lists going into our mainstream stock as well, and not just that the Traveller Accommodation Programme sites as listed here. So I'm very supportive, and I think it's one of the better things we do in the council and one we should be proud of, as how we have always been in the years I've been here anyway, inclusive towards and working with the travelling community. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Kelly.
Hi, I'd like to congratulate Liam and his team very much so. The travelling community I know in Sorens are also very supportive of this, and I'm fully supportive of it as well, it's a brilliant programme, and I look forward to working in the future. Thank you.
From my own point of view, I think we've, we still have significant challenges, and my fear is that discrimination, like against other groups, is not getting better all the time, that it's started to get worse in some cases, so I have concerns about that. I think it's one of those things that, this is an excellent programme, but I think we're always in need of more traveller accommodation, and it's one of those things that as a public representative, I think it's important for us to support the executive in any way we can in the provision of it. So I'd like to happily allow, if Liam wants to, if there's any responses or to some of the queries and questions, to bring Mr Burke in.
Thanks, Mayor. Just pick up on your point first, there is a lot done, but there is quite a lot more to do, so I'll just go back on some of the questions there. Councillor Newman, I can put timelines around some of the projects, it's difficult at times, sometimes one plan, project in one plan will lead on and be completed during the lifetime of the next plan, but the timeline for delivery reduces dramatically, where there's cooperation and willingness from traveller sides to get work done. So I can put timelines around all those projects and I can let you know what they are if you've a are if you have a specific one in mind. So the plan is quite ambitious, sets out a lot of work that needs to be done, and there's some work has started on commencing that already. Councillor Hanifey, you didn't ask what works in Morgan Place are in hand, so they should commence pretty soon. Focus Ireland didn't actually make a submission, councillor Ryan, an official from Focus Ireland made a submission on behalf of the Irish Coalition to End Ute Homelessness, so that's just a reference there to Focus Ireland. Just on some of councillor Coppins' points, I don't see evidence now that there's discrimination or neglect from the local authorities' perspective towards dealing with traveller citizens. I have to say it's quite the opposite from my experience. I know and acknowledge that it's very difficult to get private rented and we work with traveller families and particularly young families who are setting up new family units. We work with them to try and make sure that they don't get missed out on it, they get looked after, so that's an important thing to point out, that we do our best to make sure that they get whatever supports they need. It's important for members to link in with the Local Traveller Accommodation Consultant Committee and that's where a lot of work gets, could get done, more could be done there. And apprenticeships, we're linked in with the HSE and the U3. We have some success stories around apprenticeships where young travellers have got over the line and have trained, and one lad from Ballycoulan is working with Dublin City Council now, is qualified as a plumber. I met him last week and he has an apprentice now with him, training him in, so there is good news stories there. I don't think we can really reflect on underspending on our budgets because we have a very strong budgetary position and in fairness, the local authority for the last number of years has put significant funds into supporting traveller citizens in the county. Councillor Graves, on Salo, we've made good progress. There was a delay around the site selection there, we've made good progress on that, so I will have a good update on that for you very shortly. And likewise, councillor Quinn, on Gardiner's Hill, we have had a lot of dialogue with the families living there, so there should be some considerable activity around the site there in the coming months. On Moyn Park, yes, it's a very large family group living in Moyn Park. The site itself was refurbished a short number of years ago and other refurbishment works have continued on. We have plans to expand from within the site, three bays and to refurbish the caretaker's house. We have rehoused some of the families from Moyn Park elsewhere, but again, it's a grown family, so we have to address that by means of looking at other alternatives by way of the provision of accommodation. And I can talk certainly to the people around the racecourse there, but again, managing horses around the sites, just something we keep an eye on to make sure obviously that the animal welfare aspect is looked after. Houth Road, no specific location, I suppose identified at this point in time. It's identified as an objective in the plan. I think that's everything. I'd have to just say, I know there are a few references to myself there, and obviously it's not all on me, so this plan wouldn't be here without Joan here beside me, Trish who works in the office, and a very significant team in housing and in the architects department who do a tremendous amount of work to deliver the services that we try to deliver to the traveller citizen. So there's a lot of gratitude due to them in fairness. So I'd like to take all the praise, but I can't actually take all of it in fairness. So that's everything. Thank you.
councillor Coppins?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, for the record, I wasn't saying that the council was discriminating against the travelling community. I was saying that there'd been decades of neglect in society, so I just want to make that clear. It's very obvious that that's the case, and yeah, so just not in any way talking about the council on that one.
councillor Gairon?
I'd like to propose we adopt the plan, Mayor.
Seconded. Agreed. Item 27, Fingal Skills Strategy 2024 to 2029. Sorry? Not yet, no. You're not ready yet, no?
On 23, not yet, not yet, we'll be back shortly. Thanks, Mayor. Members, look, over the last couple of years, we've been strengthening the strategic framework for economic development in the county, and in its last term, the council adopted Future Fingal as the overarching strategy for economic development and adopted a new LECP, tourism and food strategies. The Fingal Skills Strategy is the mechanism that we will be using to deliver the skills development elements of the framework, and under the last SPC and the Skills Strategy Implementation Group, Economic Development Unit, assisted by Grand Thornton here, have conducted an extensive examination and consultation process to bring a new skills strategy before you today for consideration and adoption. It hasn't been before the SPC, as the SPC has just been convened tonight, but it has been brought to the Corporate Policy Group and is recommended by them. So I will introduce Aoife Sheridan, the Senior Executive Officer in the Economic Development Unit, and Lorcan Blake of Grand Thornton, who will take you through the main points of the strategy and will take questions afterwards.
Thanks, John. We've had a number of briefing sessions on the Fingal Skills Strategy, the draft that's been before you, so I'd like to thank all the councillors who participated in those and the inputs that you've given to us. The strategy outlines four objectives and 10 actions in Future Fingal around skills development, and the Skills Strategy is a key deliverable under Future Fingal and the LECP regarding the implementation and the delivery of those objectives relating to skills development. So following on from the adoption of Future Fingal, the Economic Development Strategy and the LECP, we're building on those lessons and learn from the implementation of the first skills strategy and from best practice that we've learned from our European partners and the Skylab Interact Project. So Lorcan Blake is here from Grand Thornton, our consultants on this project, and we are going to just bring you very quickly through some of the main points of this. We've had an awful lot of public and key stakeholder consultations, and I'd also like to acknowledge the stakeholders in the Fingal Skills Strategy Implementation Group. So they include Dublin Regional Skills Forum, Solus, various employers from industry and business across Fingal, education and training providers, unions and Fingal LCDC, and of course the elected members. So there's been an awful lot of input into this new skills strategy. I think it's a very strong strategy. We've also developed a skills forecasting model and methodology to help us project future skills gaps in the county so that we can respond to those, identify them and respond to them within the context of the Skills Strategy Implementation Group. So I'm going to hand over to Lorcan Blake now, who'll bring you through very high level of the various objectives in the plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Aoife. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lorcan Blake, I'm a director at Grand Thornton in Dublin, and over the past six or seven months, as Aoife mentioned, we've been working with Aoife, John and the wider team in Fingal County Council on the second iteration of the Skills Strategy. This iteration of the strategy has been developed in line with the LECP, as Aoife mentioned, in line with the Economic Development Strategy and in line with various other national, supranational and local policies of relevance. Very briefly, to bring you through some of the slides on the project approach we have taken, many of you have seen this already, so I'll briefly just touch on the five key phases we went through, from a discovery phase where we looked at the previous iteration of the strategy and other policies of relevance, through to the engagement phase where we had one-to-one consultations with 25-plus stakeholders from across the Fingal economy and skills ecosystem. We also circulated a survey of businesses and other organisations, which gave us a great guide. Thirdly, a modelling phase, which Aoife mentioned there, and I will touch on the results of that in a moment. In the fourth instance, we put together the strategy components, which touch on objectives, owners and goals for the coming four or five years. And finally, the reporting phase, which we are in at the moment, where we've put together a draft report, we have brought it to the CPG and other forum, and finally, we are bringing it to the council this evening. In terms of the research findings, as I mentioned, we have conducted desk research on various policies, strategies of relevance. We've also looked at broader trends that will be influential over the labour market in Fingal over the coming five, 10, 15 years. So the obvious ones are the twin transition of green and digital skills, but then there are other areas such as an ageing population, which will be of great relevance. There are other areas such as transversal skills, which will certainly come to the fore. Globalisation comes into play, migration as well, which is really topical. Secondly, we conducted primary research, as I mentioned. We heard a huge variety of views from people across the skills ecosystem, including trade unions, education and training providers, the IDA, Enterprise Ireland and various others, so we've fully taken on board their views and put it together the strategy. And finally, the modelling phase, we put together a really comprehensive model on the Fingal skills pipeline and the demand for skills in Fingal over the coming five years. So on this slide, we have demonstrated some of the key areas where we expect skills gaps to emerge in Fingal, and as you can see on the left-hand side, the likes of professional services, retail, health, tourism and hospitality have quite significant net requirements each year over the coming five years. So that really guided our thinking with regards to where the action should be targeted. And I think it's very important to mention in this instance as well that the model has two components to it, so there's the demand and the supply side. On the demand side, you will always have turnover in the labour market, so retail, for instance, there tends to be a lot of people of school age or college age who may jump between jobs. That partially explains the high level of turnover in the retail and the high net requirement in the retail sector. It's slightly different in other sectors, but I think that's really important just to point out that there is a replacement demand, but there's also an expansion demand such as in professional services, health and so on, where we expect new jobs to be created. And overall, it's worth mentioning that we expect about 14,000 new jobs to be created in Fingal between now and 2029. Moving on to the themes and actions, and this is my final slide to present today, we have pulled together five key themes, which are based on all of the research we've conducted, the model which we have developed and everything we heard back through the consultation phase, to very briefly go through the five areas. In the first instance, we have access to real-time labour market intelligence, so this is really about understanding Fingal's labour market, not just once every five years, but continually doing that over the coming five-year period. So we have a few actions in that regard, which are contained in the strategy document. A, it is to update this forecast model, which is Fingal's now to update and work with over the coming five years, so every year you know where you're at. Secondly, to publish a barometer, conduct an annual survey of organisations as well, to really keep a finger on the pulse. And finally, to hold what we call an annual skills summit, to bring all of the education and training providers together in one forum once a year. Secondly, on increasing awareness, we are conscious that there's great infrastructure in Fingal already, great education and training programmes available, but we do feel more could be done to raise awareness around what's available, so what's available in terms of education and training opportunities, career supports, routes to employment within Fingal. We think the Explore Your Future initiative is absolutely brilliant, so keep doing that annual event, but also spread that out a little bit more. And finally, schools are really, really important, obviously to the pipeline of new talent into Fingal, so getting into schools and looking at work experience opportunities and promoting them as much as possible is really important in terms of developing the next generation of workers within the Fingal economy. The third theme is on labour market participation through the LECP process, the Economic Development Strategy as well and other areas. We have heard that there are barriers to people entering the labour force and the workforce overall, be it childcare, public transport, and we do suggest that they are looked at as part of this, but we'd also call out areas like basic digital literacy that is really important when people are looking to enter the labour market and is an initial hurdle in most jobs these days. Secondly, we'd mentioned migrants and immigrants to the Fingal economy who may need to undertake conversion courses so their qualifications are recognised. And finally, we propose an action of setting up what's called the Labour Market Partnership to bring together community groups, enterprises, education and training providers, local government to target and assess where the real barriers are and to put in place concrete actions, and they may be broken down by geographic areas or by other criteria across the Fingal community. The final two actions then, I'll briefly touch on, sector skills support. I think it's worthy of mention that the sector skills implementation groups that have been established have been really effective in many instances to date over the previous five or six years. We're suggesting that they are kept in place because they're a really important forum for employers and education providers to work together with Fingal and put together concrete actions for individual sectors. Under this theme, we would also mention the likes of apprenticeships and traineeships, which are absolutely vital as alternative routes that maybe haven't got the attention they required in previous years at a national level and should really be pushed to the fore as opportunities. And finally, just to mention the likes of a Back to Fingal initiative, we suggest as a targeted campaign to try and bring people back who may have emigrated in recent years to the likes of Australia. There's a huge talent pool there that could be brought back to Fingal to great effect between now and 2029. Finally, in work progression, it relates to lifelong learning, which is absolutely essential in terms of skills development. We feel that more could be done, and there are certainly actions in there around upskilling across a person's lifetime so that they have opportunities to contribute and be active in terms of the education system in Fingal. We'd also touch on the likes of micro credentials and micro qualifications, which are related but not exactly the same, but are a very accessible way for people to undertake further skills initiatives. Finally, on this, we acknowledge that SMEs are really challenging when it comes to skills development. In many instances, there are cost barriers, it may be quite difficult to release staff for specific training initiatives, and for that reason, we have two initiatives, which we are putting forward as part of an action. One is more tailored online courses, which are accessible at any time of day to workers in SMEs. And secondly, we're proposing that an SME training fund is explored and perhaps piloted as an option to break down some of the cost barriers which exist for SMEs in Fingal today. So that's the conclusion of my presentation. I'll open to the floor now.
Thanks, well, that's kind of my job, but there you go. I want to thank Mr Blake because, you know, we've got a lot of time pressure, so, and that was a good presentation, a lot of information in a short period of time, really appreciate it. I want to take in councillor Gairon, and again, you know, we've got a bit of business on this and there's a couple of agenda items, so looking to try and get through to some of the motions as well. So I'll ask contributors to be brief if you can, councillor, or with questions. Councillor Gairon?
Well done, that's a fantastic strategy and plan, and I have to say, you've made it very simple and for people to understand, so I appreciate the effort you went to for your audience. The one thing that I do think we should try and encourage more within Fingal or within this or within the local enterprise office, I don't know exactly where it is, but it's to encourage people who are currently in employment to upscale or to prepare or to look for future opportunities and not to wait until something happens. And I think if that's something that we could take on board, it would be very helpful. But thank you very much, and Chair, that's me done.
Thanks, councillor Gairon. Councillor Hopkins?
Sorry. In relation to Fingal's own roadmap for growing internal skills, I wonder where we are at with upskilling our own internal staff to ensure that going forward we'd have less reliance on a Grand Thornton or consultants and use our own staff to produce these kind of reports. Thanks.
councillor McGuire?
Yeah, thank you, and again, this is probably one of the most important documents that I've seen in a long time because it's a document that hits a variety of departments that we work with and the population that we have and the talent pool. And I think it's important that, you know, in this report, we talk about collaboration and working with. You'd just like a little bit more detail, and I'm sure there is an awful lot more detail in the report as to who these stakeholders are, but it's important that we bring them on the journey, that this isn't a document that just sits for a small minority of people, that it includes everybody, you know, education, schools, third level, adult education, employers, small, big, start-up businesses, whatever they have. You know, I admire the vision that we have in that we're going to try and enact this policy, you know, and it's a policy that I think is going to be evolving over time. It's actually going to get more heavy on the workload for people because we've got to make sure that we're hitting all of the people that we need to hit, but, you know, a really good document, and I'd love to see that we actually get number one done, we get number two done. Is there a time scale for doing these things or is it just going to be an ongoing thing? Thank you.
councillor Honora-Mayer?
Thank you very much. Just to welcome this strategic plan, I think it's a brilliant one, coming on foot of the recent economic strategic plan that was also developed and launched by Fingal County Council. I think this is really crucial. I think this is really crucial. I recall moving a motion for Finga County Council to drive an initiative like this that would include, you know, apprenticeship, you know, targeting, you know, people within the education profile, internship and all that. And especially coming from constituency, you know, that has a lot of disadvantage, I think it is very important that we use that as a strategy to deal with some of the untoward and, you know, unforeseen circumstances, you know, with young people, you know, going down the wrong route, you know, skills development is very, very important. So I want to welcome this. The other issue is, the motion I had raised was to look at how we partner with organisations within Fingal, you know, to develop this strategy. And, you know, thankfully, the motion passed in flying colour, you know, with all councillors supporting it. Now, the question is, with this particular strategy, do we have plans like that to tap into, you know, the number of organisations within Fingal to ensure that skills development cuts across all, you know, all strata? Thank you very much.
Councillor Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor. Assuming the strategy will be adopted today, but what happens from here on in, like who has ownership of it? How is it planned to review it and to assess progress? Thank you.
Councillor Dennison.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to thank Mr Blake and his team, and also our own Economic Development Department for the work on this. I think it's worth bearing in mind that, you know, the changes to local government in 2014 gave more responsibility and ownership to local authorities in terms of economic development. And we were one of the first councils to draw up a local economic and community plan, and we were the first to develop a skills strategy. I'm not even sure if every local authority in the country has a skills strategy at the moment, very few of them do. And, you know, I hear up and down the country councillors complaining that they don't have enough powers and responsibilities yet. This is a very obvious responsibility that they should have. And I'd, you know, I'd recommend this report to everybody, I think we should all read it just to get an idea of what our labour market is like and what the demands and requirements are there. And the outcome of this will only be seen down the road in years to come. And I look forward to working with the Economic Development Department in the next few years just to see this coming to fruition. And like a lot of our plans, these are rolled over. This was, there was a previous plan to this. This one has been expanded and updated. And I think we have a pretty trim economic development department, and we need outside agencies and agents to come in and help us when we have once off pieces of work like this in terms of developing reports like this. So it's very easy to say, well, why do we have consultants? But we need consultants, as we know from all the other work that the council does. We need people from outside to come in from time to time. And I hope we'll see Grant Thornton back in five years' time or seven years' time. Thank you.
After an open and transparent process, councillor Humphries.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the team for completing such a large body of work. I'd also like to thank Aoife, who was very generous and responded to multiple of emails I sent in. Unfortunately, you didn't incorporate everything I sent in, but there's always the subgroups to continue pushing those points forward on. So I'd just like to thank you for this. And also like to kind of echo other people that says that this has become a gold standard that councils across Ireland are trying to copy. And it's good that we're out first, that we're improving on it. Initiatives like the Transition Year Expo that we had in DCU came out of our last skills strategy, which has grown from strength to strength. I'm looking forward to seeing that grow further. I was delighted to see this week that we've finally started the work on construction and transport and logistics by engaging directly with young people and trying to get them involved in a sector that we know from report after report that we have a skills shortage in. So I'd like to thank you for the report and looking forward to getting the work done on this.
Thanks. Try and follow me on, boys, and be brief. I think when you're mayor, you get a chance to see some things that you don't get a chance to see otherwise. And the feedback that I've had from many different organisations, from both the launch of the strategy and other occasions at the TY Expo, is that the work that is being done is serious and in advance of elsewhere. The TY Expo was remarkable. It was great to see so many students, young people really getting a chance to explore what it is that they can do or achieve and how to do it. A remarkable piece of success. With any strategy, there's obviously bits where you'd say, I might emphasise this a bit more, I would look at, you know, what we can do in relation to things like in-house apprenticeships, other pieces about how much we're going to have governmental sector expanded, but I'm looking at it in relation to skills on a climate change basis or that it'd be required for that. But all in all, I think it's an excellent strategy and is to be commended. So I don't know if you want to come back in and answer some of the questions.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, members, for all the compliments to my team and to Grant Thornton's team as well. We're very proud of the strategy. And it's taken an awful lot of work and it's a bit of a labour of loves for us, so thank you very much for the compliments and the recognition there. I'll go through your comments, councillor Gairon, in relation to upskilling. That's a core theme of ours, so under theme five, in work progression, we're looking very carefully at upskilling and reskilling. We're working with a number of organisations there to promote things like micro credentials and micro qualifications and encourage people to upscale so that they can move up within their organisation. So while we have overarching strategies or overarching actions within the strategy, we're working particularly hard at subgroup level to kind of realise some of those objectives, particularly within the construction sector and the transport and logistics sectors, trying to make sure that those various upskilling programmes are happening and that people are availing of them so they can move up within their companies. So that is a key area of focus. We're also working with DCU and other colleges in terms of the micro credentials that they are providing, and there's quite a wide range of those, particularly around digital skills and climate change. And what an awful lot of businesses and industries don't realise is that they're heavily subsidised. Most of them are 80% funded, if not 100% funded, and most of them are online so that you can easily avail of them. So we're doing a piece of work with various bodies now to promote all of those upskilling opportunities, but that work will continue as we move through the strategy. Councillor Hopkins, you mentioned internal skills. You know, my team is constantly learning, trying to upscale. I don't think I'll ever be Mr Blake's credentials or his colleague Andrew Webb's. I'm not an economist, so I can only live and learn, but we are trying to upscale ourselves and we're quite fortunate that we've a number of graduates from the LGA graduate programme who are bringing new skills to our team, particularly in the areas of marketing and data analysis. So I'm hoping those graduates won't go anywhere, and they're actually up in the gallery there today, so I'm hoping you'll all stay for quite a period of time so that we can learn from you as much as you learn from us. Councillor McGuire, we have a broad range of stakeholders involved in the skills strategy group, and we're trying to deal with a large number of things. So there's a wide range of stakeholders from education, training and in industry. At the moment, we're kind of focused on three sectors, construction, transport logistics, green skills and services. We're hoping to expand that range, but we're very much being led by industry in terms of what subgroup sectors that they want. But everyone who is at the table is making a very worthwhile contribution. And the timescale for delivery of these actions, while it goes out over 2029, there is delivery and councillor Ryan as well in terms of assessing progress. The skills strategy implementation group is overseeing directly the implementation of the plan, so it's co-chaired by someone from the education and training pillar and from industry. So there are two chairs so that both sides can balance. We have an action plan which was developed this year for looking at actions that we wanted to implement over an 18 month time period. So the pillar chairs of each of those subgroups are responsible for implementation, working with my team over that period of time to realise the operational actions which fall out of this, and those are more sectorally specific. So we're looking at deep dives into construction and transport logistics. And councillor Humphries mentioned a competition there, the construction, transport and logistics competition we're running with schools. That very much came from learnings from the Intereg Skyler project we're involved in with the support of the industry stakeholders in those particular areas. So we will be making progress there, reporting in to the skills strategy implementation group, but then we will also report in annually to the LCDC and also into the SPC as well in terms of the progress made. And we do an annual outturn report so that you can see what we have done over the course of the year. So that's how we'll track and monitor progress. And councillor McGuire, over time, we will be doing those annual plans in terms of implementation of those actions. And I do hope that a number of them will move along very quickly. Many of these actions that are in the plan are already in progress. Councillor Omwera, in relation to the apprenticeships and areas of disadvantage, we're working very closely with a number of stakeholders, particularly focusing on apprenticeships. A number of other educational routes are very well served, and that's part of the reason we're doing the TY Explorer Future Expo. We're trying to address the gaps that we have that are not addressed by other events for students in Fingal. And we're liaising very closely with schools, particularly in areas of disadvantage, to make sure that they can avail of those opportunities and that they get involved in the expo and also in the competition as well. But there's always room to improve, so we'll need to continue to work with those schools. And one of the learnings that is coming out from it, we've kind of focused on TY up to this point, but a lot of our European partners are moving earlier and earlier in the educational cycle, so that's something we need to be aware of in terms of learning as we move forward. And we're working in, we have a very strong partnership with all the stakeholders, particularly in regard to the delivery of the skills strategy. We work very closely with DDL ETB and City of Dublin ETB with DCU and a number of private industrial groups, including Dublin Regional Skills Forum as well. There's a number of key stakeholder interests there. Councillor Dennison, you're correct, we were the first skills strategy in Ireland. We're currently still the only one, although there are a number of people who are coming up behind us, but we're still the first and will be the first to have a second one as well. And I think it's very important in terms of labour market demand and getting that information, particularly out to the schools, in terms of where your children are going to have jobs in the future and what you should be training towards and what those outcomes will be. So we continue to work very closely with schools, trying to make sure that we get that information into the school system. Councillor Humphries, we will be working very hard with the subgroups to continue their work, and thank you very much for your acknowledgement of the expo and the competition. The expo has been kind of a very big event for us and has been received very well, so we're delighted that it has been going strength to strength and we hope it will continue. And Mayor, thank you very much as well for your attendance at the expo this year. I know it was very much appreciated. Maybe you got some ideas for future job applications yourself? So there was a wide range of options, barbering perhaps. So there was a good, there was a very high attendance. We had over 2,200 students from Fingal alone, and we had schools from other counties even looking to attend, which we couldn't accommodate. So we hope to continue to do that expo in years to come. I don't know if John wants to come in on anything or maybe Mary Egan regarding in-house training programmes?
I don't know that Mary needs to, or I need to. Aoife, I think you've given fairly very comprehensive responses and demonstrated the level of competence we have in this area very well. So I suppose the only thing I'd like to say is, members, this is a strategy that will grow and evolve as we work through, Larkin mentioned, gathering more accurate data and more detailed data and working through the various working groups that we have where industry and education and ultimately broader community will interact around the development of skills and pathways to skills as we work through this. I want to commend Aoife and her team and Larkin and the team in Grant Thornton and the membership of the SSIG, and we look forward to working through the SPC. Members, at the end of the report, there is a small resolution for you to pass just adopting this as a strategy. So if members are happy to agree that, then we proceed.
Proposed. Second, councillor Dennison. Agreed. Right. So where are we now?
So the chief executives report, we have an hour left, and it would be great if we could get to some motions as well, so just bear that in mind as we go through, but matters can always arise.
Members, just a couple of things to draw to your attention. I don't think I mentioned at the last meeting that a member of our management team has retired, the law agent Helen O'Neill retired in early October. Just to congratulate her and thank her for her work for the council. An interim law agent has been appointed, Elaine McDonald, who you may come across in correspondence as we move through various issues. I want to thank the Tidy Towns and congratulate them on the fantastic results through the National Tidy Town Awards and a number of gold medals, which we're very pleased about, and just to thank them for their work that they do every day. You see the dreaded Christmas is coming about and there's some information on Christmas events within the report, and just to acknowledge the good work over Halloween by a range of the teams and making sure that everybody stayed safe. In addition to that, it's a November report, so as you'd expect, it's got good progress on the work programme, both capital and operational over the year. You'll see that a lot of the work programmes have progressed and are nearing completion. And at this stage, I suppose all the departments and the directors are planning their work programme for 2025, and that in relation to the budget which will be presented to you in early December. Myself and the team are here to answer any questions.
Councillor Gairon.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank chief executive, very comprehensive report. I put a motion there, Mayor, that I would like, if you could confirm it, if it could be considered in relation to the chief executives report. And if you could advise if we could take that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
The motion is in order. I'll perhaps give a chance to have contributions not related to the motion, and then we'll have a separate discussion on the motion if it's proposed and seconded. Councillor Hopkins.
Two quick things. First of all, just to congratulate everyone on the Swords Cultural Quarter. It was fantastic, but I'm just a bit concerned about the Lord Mayor's building. It's a heritage building, landmark building, and it's very dear to people's hearts. So I'm just wondering, like when we're doing incredible work on the cultural quarter at one end of the town, how we could lose a building like this, how it wasn't protected, why we didn't protect it and how we could remedy this? And then also just in relation to the derelict sites, so I'd just like to welcome that we're calling for the public to report derelict sites, which obviously we all know are a blight on our towns and villages. And I would like to just wish the public better luck than I've had on getting things onto this site. Based on my question, this month, we've had, we've very few listed and we haven't gotten any taxes from any of them. So I just think that effective taxes in this area would really help bring the buildings back, which we want in a housing crisis, and it would make, in addition to the provision of homes, also the addition of new businesses in our towns and villages. Thanks.
Councillor Quinn.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate the events team on the recent Halloween events. Good work done. And also the operations team in regards to the clean up or collection of waste that could have been used for bonfires. So I just want to raise in relation to private rental inspections. I had a question down and I'm quite concerned, and the clarity I'm looking for is, in the report back from the question, it stated that an environmental health officer had been employed recently to challenge the backlog in private rental inspections. Am I to understand that the environmental health officer that has been re-employed, because I believe that he retired recently from the council, is on a full time or is it on a part time basis? it on a part-time basis? And can I just also raise the planning application from St Joseph's in Rush and Guelph School of Russell in relation to the extensive report that was given back and the planning office doing their job very diligently. But what I would ask for is the planning department, if they could sit down with the applicant to try and run through everything and give them as much support as possible, because, you know, the worry there from having spoken to the principal is that we're looking at another six months before anything will happen. And for many, many years, Rush has been a deficit in, sorry, for many, many years, Rush had a deficit in skilled places, especially in secondary skilled places. So I'd look for the planning department if they can engage with them and that. Thank you very much.
Councillor Tormey?
Thank you very much for the report and thank you very much as well for all the work that is being done. I was spending a lot of time in Dublin city area recently and a lot of people are commenting on how well Fingal is run in comparison, so I just wanted to flag that. My question is in relation to the strategic policy unit. I raised before that I think, you know, it would be good to just have a little bit more information in terms of the development plan, the local area plans, master plans, framework plans that are being proposed, just to give us a sense on where things are at, what is being aimed for them in terms of housing delivery and infrastructure delivery. And then I also want to raise as well, we're supposed to be having a framework plan for Sutton Cross. During the development plan process, I put down that we needed to look at traffic management as part of that. There is a huge issue with Sutton Cross that we do need to address, and I think the people want, you know, a sense in terms of what we're maybe going to be looking at for that, because, yeah, they're just really, really struggling with it at the moment. So it would be great just to get a little bit more information around that and then also perhaps projected timeframes for the ones that aren't in the first round of plans to be done. Thank you.
Councillor Donnelly?
Thanks a lot. Just a quick question. The Mystical Light Show is going ahead to share in Shackleton Gardens, but I can't see any mention of the Christmas marker. And I was just wondering if it is going ahead and if not, why not? Thank you.
Councillor Humphries?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. The XL bully legislation came in on the kind of first of October and are due to be kind of illegal without exemption from the first of February. XL bully dog is not a type of breeds, so has the department given any extra funding for our dog wardens to compensate for kind of the extra workload that they're going to have to go into because it's not straightforward to say that's an XL bully dog and that's not because it's a mixed breed dog and it's going to add an extra workload on to already overtaxed wardens? Is there any extra resources coming from central government to help enforce this legislation they passed?
Councillor O'Meara?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to congratulate the chief executive for the report, two key items, Sinobro interchange. I think that's a huge win and Fingal County Council needs to be commended for that fantastic infrastructure. You know, it's improved the traffic in that area tremendously, especially leading to the shopping centre and the environment. So listen, a pat on the back, we don't really get to congratulate ourselves when we get it right, but I think it is really appropriate that we, you know, we put our finger on the trigger when we are right. The other would be the Mixtown Community Centre. I think that's a massive one as well. So I'm just looking forward to seeing, you know, the array of activities that will be happening there, you know, the potential to really engage and provide activities for young people and the whole community in Mixtown is tremendous, and I think that needs to be commended. Congratulations once again. Thanks.
Councillor Mowbray?
Thanks, Chair. Just in relation to two longstanding items on the chief executive report, just to welcome progress on the broad metas way and the completion of the bridge section, which is great to see. And secondly, in terms of the Portran Road footpath improvement project, to welcome the decision from the Portmanala, which has been a long time coming. So just to commend all involved in those projects and to just urge as much progress as possible to move them forward. Thanks very much.
Okay, do you want to come in?
I'll pass it over to the directors for most of the questions, just to councillor Hopkins' point about the Lord Mayor's and other sites in terms of, I suppose, our ability to get them back into use and to protect them where they need protection. We have made a significant progress, thanks to John and his team, with the Derelict Sites Act, with quite a number of sites now on the register and the penalty in relation to being on the register commencing in January 2025. So there's more work to be done in that area, but between your DF in terms of funds that are now available to us or have been available to acquire derelict sites or derelict properties, there's some progress, but with more work to be done. And it's never easy and you're dealing with property rights, et cetera. So I suppose maybe more to do, but at least the progress that was made in 2024 has been On the private rental inspections, I'll ask Mr Carroll to come in, and on the school planning application in Rush, Matthew might make some comment on that. Thanks for the comment about Fingal being run well. I hope we certainly do our best and thanks to the directors and the teams on the ground for the work they do, but we continue to try and deliver a high standard. On the framework plan in Sutton Cross, I think you'll take your point, traffic management is a key issue at Sutton Cross. It's going to have to be a fundamental part of that assessment. John, you might come in on Shackleton Gardens and the programme for that at Christmas, and Dave will come in on the XL bullies. There are additional resources and he'll outline those. Thanks for the comment on Sinobro interchange. I hope it does its work this time of year, has always been a problem with the centre in Blanchestown, so delighted that it's finished. And we'll see the potential of Meeks Town Community Centre on Saturday when it's opened. I think there'll be a number of community groups using it on that day. So I might hand over to the team then to take the questions.
Yeah, just on the XL bullies, the government announced a £2 million fund for additional improvements to dog shelter facilities and equipment for dog wardens. There's also a specific training course that's being provided for the dog wardens to deal with the XL bully. So our dog wardens, our dog wardens will be attending that, obviously between now and February for the implementation of the new guidelines. Just in relation to dog wardens, as I said before, when we looked at this a couple of years ago, there was two dog wardens. We now have six across the county, there's four and two part-time, and they have a seven-day service. They cover off weekend events and different things like that. So that's the current position. Thank you.
Just on the further information request for the school in Rush, if there's any points of clarification that are required, the applicant can reach out to myself or the senior planner.
In terms of private rental inspections, we have, we're in the process of engaging an environmental health officer on an ad hoc basis, so it's not a full-time position, it'll be on an ad hoc basis. We're also looking at a medium to longer term solution in terms of working with Dublin City Council as a longer term service provider, so this will address a small backlog that has built up. And we'll be working forward, working together with Dublin City Council to put a more longer term arrangement in place.
Yeah, Mayor, councillor Donnelly, there is a market as part of Shackleton this year. I'll just confirm that and come back to you.
Just how we would lose a heritage building like that? The Lord Mayor's is not a protected structure. If it's okay, councillor Hopkins, I'll ask the conservation officer to come back to you on the specific reasons why, but it isn't on the protected structures register.
So I have a motion here from councillor Geary and seconded by councillor Newham. Oh, sorry. Ellie, you looking to come in?
Sorry, yes, I just wanted to confirm there with the CEO that part of that building is protected. Part of the Lord Mayor's building is protected. It's on the forest roadside, definitely. Just wanted to clarify that.
Happy to clarify all of that. I'll have the conservation officer give some details to members.
So that brings us through to the motion. If we could put the motion up. So it's, I'll take it as in order and propose a seconded. Chief executive wants to speak on it first, if that's just to give a response to the motion? Chief executive?
It's less of a response and more just to point out that the cause and effect that's implicated in the motion is not necessarily connected. And as I said earlier, it is my belief that the members of Fingal County Council are, you know, implement the highest standards as a planning authority and did so in the recent county development plan. And to insinuate otherwise, I think, is a disservice. And just to bear in mind, there can be challenges to any plans we do and we win and we lose within those challenges. But overall, the performance of the development plan was very strong and the reports were delivered to members in a timely manner and were also very strong, robust planning reports. So I just, I'm a little bit concerned about the motion, one, cause and effect, that one thing may have contributed to the other. And then secondly, it goes way beyond the judgment that was made in relation to the case we discussed earlier.
Councillor Geary?
As to a motion, before the motion is put to the floor, the reason I brought this motion is certainly not as a criticism of the current development plan. The reality is that during the last development plan, and indeed the one prior to that, there was a huge delay in members obtaining reports. I'm not saying that as a criticism, I'm saying it as a reality. In fact, in the last development plan, we had to adjourn one meeting after an hour because we only received reports the day of the meeting. The point that I'm making is that, yes, obviously some of us made errors in the contributions that we made, but some people have day jobs and to get a meeting packed two days before a meeting and to attend your own job is just something that, in my view, can create problems for members. And if members had, as is enjoyed in other local authorities, all the reports for the motions at the outset of the meeting, they would be able to judge the reports in the round and they would be able to make contributions, having had time to do due diligence on the information that's coming out. As I say, it's not something that's meant as a criticism, it's a proposal that's hopefully going to become an improvement. Other county councils and other local authorities can get their reports at the outset. And I do believe that it is not a big ask, it's pointing it out well enough in advance that the necessary resources can be put in place for that. Thanks.
Councillor Tormey?
I can certainly see the merit in this, but I think it's kind of bigger than just this one issue of getting the reports. I think part of the delay was just that there were so many motions that were put down and did they all need to be there changing one word and this and this? So I really do think, and I can't remember who was brought to the OPNF in the last term about reviewing the development plan process, because certainly when you compare us to other counties, it felt like we were far surpassed, the number of hours spent in the chamber or the level of motions that were being debated, it was beyond belief at times, to be honest. And so I think perhaps there might be a little bit of work that could be done beforehand, maybe by the councillors, by the different groupings beforehand, to be able to try and manage some of that workload so that it does become a much kind of better discussion. Because, I mean, also, you know, people were getting tired, it was, I was working 14-hour days those days. Like, you know, it was just a bit crazy, the whole thing. So I think the whole thing needs to be reviewed, not just this particular thing, which is part of it, but I do think it was, part of it was the amount of work that was being put on to the staff members as well.
Councillor Dennison?
Thanks, Mayor. I think, you know, Fingal is a bit exceptional because we do have a lot of work to do in our development plan because of the nature of the county and, as others have said, you know, the huge volume of motions that came in the last time. And bearing in mind that we were just in Covid or just coming out of Covid, and I think that put further constraints on the work that had to go into preparing the reports and the plans and taking in maybe outside people to help us as well. So I'm not sure how realistic this is. I'd certainly like to hear from the chief executive on it. And just in terms of the court case, I don't want to rehearse that again, but, you know, we had a lot of guidance from the executive throughout that plan, warnings to councillors about, you know, or guidance about what we should be saying and shouldn't be saying. And, you know, we were asked to be cautious at times and it's very easy in the middle of a plan and people are tired just to sort of go on a bit too much maybe sometimes, but that's certainly, there's something to bear in mind for the future for next plan. Thank you.
Councillor Humphries?
Yeah, just as we're talking about stuff that to be bear in mind, like, the amount of hours we spent on the development plan was absolutely insane. Actually, and an awful lot of that was our own fault, because we allowed motions in that were clearly out of order, that the sitting mayor at the time ruled as out of order, but we as members overruled her and brought them back in. So it's not just on the executive giving guidance and having reports ready on time. There's also an onus on ourselves to be prudent in what motions we put in.
Councillor Butler?
Yeah, no, as lovely as this would be, I don't think it's practical, we are different in developing plans. I am very jealous of the other councils where they simply have no land left to develop the other Dublin city councils, but we do, so I think it's just the nature of the beast. As lovely as this is, I don't think it's practical. Like, we had council staff, my God, working all hours over the weekends, God knows how many hours into the evenings, seven days a week. So the only way this would work then, if we had to have our motions in two months before the plan, and I don't think, I don't think that's going to happen. Possibly going forward, we can have maybe different drops on a different day and, you know, a drop every Friday or something like that for the next stage. But no, as much as I'd love this, it's certainly not possible. On our part, you know, yeah, as councillor Humphries said, a lot of it's our own reports, motions that are out of order, we get a good report and we feel we have to talk about it for 30 minutes before we accept a report. God only knows who we think is listening and who is watching in, but I think certainly before the next development plan, we can all get together and agree a way that it can work more smoothly and more quickly. Probably will move a lot more quickly because it'll be a few months out from the next council election, so there'll be an incentive there for us to wrap it up quicker if we can, but as much as I'd love this, this would be totally unfair to put this on the council staff.
Councillor O'Brien?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I think not only the last development plan, but previous ones, for those of us who have been through the process multiple times, I think there's a lot of learnings we can probably take and hopefully address those ahead of time, because oftentimes we end up in the process and that's when we start trying to deal with issues that arise and hopefully we'll be able to kind of troubleshoot a lot of that stuff. One point being, I suppose, tightening up or, you know, making standards, standing orders around the development plan specifically more clear in terms of what's in order, what's out of order. There weren't, like, we ended up having to take all the motions that had been ruled out of order back in, because there were roughly about 50% of them that had been ruled out of order that were perfectly in order. Okay, so it wasn't a perfect process, but then we ended up dealing with motions where it was a land use zoning motion without a map. That's clearly and obviously out of order, but there was a lot of time wasted. I take councillor Butler's point, but we have to arrive in advance of the next I take councillor Butler's point, but we have to arrive in advance of the next development plan with a better system. And I think we'll certainly seek to do that through the planning SPC. And I think we can probably use the experience of the members in the chamber who've been through multiple plans to try and streamline that process. But the point behind councillor Gairon's motion here is well made. There were stages during the plan where we just simply didn't have enough advance notice of reports, or the reports in enough time, you know, that it just became very messy, so thanks, Mayor.
Councillor Coppinger.
A bit of a loss as to why this is coming up here on this agenda right now. We had a discussion earlier on about this court case and related, could we not have taken it then? And secondly, and it's not to cut across important things councillors want to raise, but some of us have motions on the agenda that we wrote last August, you know, that are actually important in a queue which looks like won't be reached again, you know, for another meeting. So I just, this has just come landed out of nowhere, I know, just a bit mystified.
That's a point of order which I'll take.
Yeah, I should have taken it earlier, I didn't realise it was going to be 20 contributions on.
Yeah, no, it's a point of order which I'll take, and the answer is the motion was only presented when the chief executive's report arose. It didn't, and the previous one came in under the CPG, it's the same item arrived in twice. But I didn't feel that I could rule it out of order when it is still related to this agenda, because I wouldn't have done it for anybody else. That's the reason why it's allowed in. As to the discussion and all the, that's down to the members. Councillor Norman.
Well, sorry, could I just finish by saying?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. It just doesn't seem the right place to discuss something like this. It should be a CPG meeting where agendas and how the development plan is dealt with. I mean, I'll whip my motion out and relate it to some of the 100 pages on the CEO's report. It's just a bit unfair that people are waiting to have their motions heard, sitting here for hours, and something comes out of nowhere that we've already discussed earlier in the meeting.
Councillor Newman.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I agree a lot there with councillor Coppinger, what she says there. Maybe that needs to be changed, but I second the motion, and it wasn't any criticism on the executive or the management team, but I did think that it made sense to me, that maybe, you know, as we all know, most of us were suffering from PTSD after that last development plan. So whatever the problem was, and how it was managed, and how we got through it, maybe it needs to be addressed. But I can just say I support this motion in good faith, and I think, as councillor O'Brien says, there's lots of things that maybe can be done. So maybe, you know, let's just get together on it, work towards making the next one a bit more, I suppose, manageable and efficient. Thanks.
Councillor Graves.
At all, to be honest, which I think the motion relates more to the timing of receiving reports, and that bit of it I definitely support. And I do think it'd be very difficult over, you know, with the documents that we're going to look at over a three-week period, to get them all upfront. And I do understand that the work that the, you know, the executive and the staff do on it. But if we could have them in a more timely manner, and it's something that we did raise during the development plan last time, so even, you know, a week, you know, get one lot, and then we have our week, and then the following week or whatever, because it is a huge amount of work. We don't have the time to concentrate on what we're doing when we get them on the day or the day before, like, it's impossible to read through. There are a lot of delays, because we end up asking a lot of questions, because we're only seeing the advice from the executive on that day, you know. So I think if, definitely, I'd be happy to support it, but I do think it would be a better idea to phase the documents so that we have enough time to consider them in advance of the meeting. And I think that's the same at all meetings, actually, this one and, you know, area meetings, et cetera.
Councillor Donnelly.
Thanks very much. I don't think there's anybody in this chamber that wouldn't agree that the whole development plan process is grueling for everybody involved, staff and councillors, and we have to come up with a better system. And there were times when we were sitting here, trying to give our attention to what was being discussed, while having an eye on what we'd been sent for the next day or two. So, you know, I think the system, it doesn't work, then you're given three minutes if it's your motion, you're given, what, 90 seconds, two minutes if it isn't, for a contribution, so it's very difficult to get enough information to make an informed choice at such short notice. So I do support the motion. Thank you.
From my own point of view, while I quite happily would look at getting more time for reports and documents, I can't support this motion, because it says so as to avoid this in the future in relation to the court felt that some contributions went beyond planning rationale, and I don't believe that link existed. I think that we, in particular in relation to the issue concerned, it was not about the generation of a report in any time or face. I felt that because the first piece of the motion is in order, that I had to take the whole motion and couldn't eliminate the piece out. But I think it would be wrong to connect the provision of those documents, it's a completely separate issue. I don't believe it would have resolved any of that issue, because people were going to discuss that, you know, any of those motions in particular. I also think in general, actually what happens, and somebody alluded to earlier, is that it just lengthens the discussion people while people clarify the reports that they've just recently read, and they're fresh. There are arguments about having, if you have the report two weeks ahead, well, then you only read it two weeks ago, and then you forget, and then you've got to... So there's no process by which we're all magically got all the information at our fingertips at any one stage. So I think it's really important from our point of view that we don't pass this motion. But I do think that while we, you know, there may be a point in advance of the next development plan where we can discuss what the way to make it easier on ourselves is. But I am very happy that all of the motions were given full discussion, that councillors debated it, and that's the reason that it took so long, is that we weren't flippant about it. We actually took time to look at reports, even if that was just during the meeting, to get clarification where it was required from the management. And what we ended up with is an extremely robust development plan on, oh, so I can't support the motion. Thanks.
Councillor Gairon.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, everybody, for the comments which I noted undertaken on board. And the reason I brought this motion was because there was obviously difficulties within the development plan. And when I reflect on the development plans, the reality is that some of the meetings were chaotic as to when we got the reports. I don't want to have to see any council staff working to two or three in the morning, or councillors having to read 100 pages of reports a couple of hours before a meeting, that doesn't work. I think it's unusual for a motion like this, that at the outset, before the motion is even put to the floor, the chief executive makes what I would say very damning and criticism contribution to the motion. And I think even more surprising is that councillor Coppinger criticises me for bringing a motion on the chief executive's report. Maybe I was just box cleverer than she did in how she brought her motion, but that's the reality of life. I note the comments, Mayor, and I withdraw the motion.
Well, councillor, before that, I think chaotic is not a description, that in relation to the development plan. So it's...
Can you say that again with the mic on?
Sorry, my opinion was that some of the meetings were chaotic, some of the discussions and when we got the reports were chaotic, and that's all. It's not a criticism of what we've ended up with as a plan, just the process that went through.
The motion's withdrawn. We're going to go back to item 23A. Notice of proposed disposal of land. Including the grant of a right of way and the grant of a way leave to the rear of Whitestown Avenue, Dublin 15 to Cass Networks Ireland. Proposer. Proposed, councillor McCamley, seconded, councillor Dennison. Agreed? Agreed. And that brings us to Mayor's Business, item A, Mayor's for Peace. I'd like the agreement of this, it's a wonderful initiative that spans the globe. It has a financial commitment of 12 euro fifty per year, and it'll allow us to promote initiatives that'll use the inspiration of what the tragedy that happened in Hiroshima and Nagasaki to try and promote peace. So I'd look to agree that, perhaps without further debate. Agreed. Item number B, in relation to domestic violence refuges across Fingal, proposed, seconded by councillor McCamley. And that the chief executive assists the existing domestic violence refuge in Fingal to increase its capacity by supporting capital assistance, more apartments, to work to establish more refuges across Fingal. And I'd like to bring in councillor Coppinger, item number 34, to take at the same time, if she's agreeable.
Proposed, sorry.
Seconded councillor Hopkins. So councillor Coppinger, I've tried as mayor to bring forward important issues on behalf of a wide range of different councillors from my own group and from other groups, and I think this was an important one that I wanted to make sure that we would get to. So I'm councillor Coppinger, if you wish to start.
I thought, so I won't like waste time, just to say, in a minute and a half, is it? That this is a global pandemic recognised by the WHO, and every single council in this country should be having discussions as to how it's going to increase refuge accommodation, because the government's stated aim is to double the amount of refuge places. Now, you would imagine that that would be the easiest thing for them to do in relation to gender-based violence. It's just a question of money and buildings and staff, not cultural change. But yes, when I visited Blanchardstown Refuge, which is the only refuge in Fingal, they told me of a decade of neglect. So they said that there had not been, which I was shocked, efforts to provide four more apartments, which they were willing to do since 2019, when I spoke to them last. I assumed that that was something that the Minister for Children was moving on, and it hadn't been. So why is this an issue for Fingal? Well, it's an issue because firstly, as I said, every council should be providing accommodation, and it interacts with the housing crisis hugely. But also, the eight apartments that Sunnis run there are social housing, on our social housing list. They were listed at the previous meetings. I was a bit surprised to discover that the council only gives Sunnis 543 euro per unit. This is for the most occupied type of social housing, occupied by multiple families over the course of a year. Clearly, there's a basis to give a lot more. They are scrounging around left, right, and centre, all different places for funds. Again, the establishment of Kuhn hasn't made that any quicker. Money's been given to greyhounds to race horses, 99 million, but very little is actually being given to the issue of violence against women. And when I met with Sunnis, they were very keen to sit down with Fingal council to discuss how they could support their application for cash funding for four more apartments on site. Now, again, it's a very tight space, but they're willing to do it because such is the need that they have. The second issue I want to raise really quickly is safe houses. There are no safe houses in Fingal whatsoever. Every other borough, well, many other boroughs, I should say, in the country do have them. So this motion, if passed, would then allow the council to discuss how it would provide or allocate such. We've had TSHOC, we've had ministers in Fingal, in Blanchardstown, three of the most important men in the country, you could say, and they did nothing to provide this, and that was said to be by managers of Sunnis. Lastly, I want to say about a resettlement officer in the last few seconds. Very disappointed with the reply to my motion. The council has got a responsibility here, but it says it's not the council's job to provide funding for an officer. We just sat listening to Graham Thornton. We have consultants continually that we give money to on the council. So what I was asking for was that we would fund a resettlement officer to help women, you know, access housing accommodation. And we should have somebody who knows what they're doing, so it would make sense, it would be somebody from Sunnis. So I would ask the members to please support my motion in full. Thanks, Mayor.
Councillor Donnelly.
Yeah, I'd like to support both motions, and myself and councillor Hanifey have been members of the Sunnis Domestic Violence Working Group for many years, and they do absolutely amazing work. And it is shocking to hear the number of families that they have to turn away on a yearly basis. Without going over everything that councillor Coppinger has said, which is all accurate and I fully support, I'd just like to add that Sunnis is a domestic violence group, and they deal with domestic violence in all of its forms. So it's not just gender-based violence, it's violence, elder abuse, and there's actually a unit there for males as well as females. So they do really, really good work, and they deserve any help we can give them. Thank you.
Councillor Quinn.
Yeah, I'd like to support the motion also. I have a similar motion in regards to medical priority farm. HMD farms are in DCC in Dublin City Council, but we don't have them in Fingal. That would go a long way to be able to get into the housing application process. I also had a recent case in Balbriggan of a very young, new Irish lady with her children that didn't have any other family members, but she subsequently went to Louth County Council for assistance. And that's very unfortunate, and it's not because Fingal refused her, it's just that Fingal haven't got a resettlement officer, and I think it's a very important motion that's been brought by yourself, Mayor, and by councillor Coppinger. So I'd like to support the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to support the motion, and thank Ruth for bringing it up, and for you, Mayor, for facilitating it, or we might not have heard it for another few months. And I think probably it's two years ago now, I didn't check the actual date, but the Fingal Women's Caucus, when we were an actual group, we brought a similar motion. And at the time, I understood that Minister O'Gorman had committed to making this a reality for the women in Fingal. As Ruth has already said, we're spending 100 million supporting greyhounds and horses, and women and children are way down the list in terms of priorities, and this absolutely has to change, so I fully support her motion. Thank you.
Councillor Gairon.
Yeah, I'd just like to commend councillor Coppinger, and indeed yourself, Mayor, for bringing this. I think it's worthy of all our support. It's something that I would really love to see going through the council, with being agreed as opposed to going through a vote. And I think it's shameful sometimes when you see what money is spent on and victims of domestic violence or people in need are not getting the supports that they need. So I think this allows us an opportunity to stand with those people in some way, and also to put in place, and hopefully do something positive as a result of the motion. Thanks.
From my own point of view, it can be very difficult for people facing the challenge of where to go, to make a decision. And anything that we can do to assist organisations, and the work that we can do ourselves, to improve how that works. And we have a wide range of investment in different services and organisations, and we do great jobs in lots of different areas from sports, skills, economic development. And I think it would be extremely useful and a good spend of the council money to enhance our relationships and to try and facilitate other organisations. to enhance our relationships and to try and facilitate other organisations, even in areas where the direct financing of piece A or B is not within our remit. And I think there is an improvement coming, but it cannot come quickly enough. So I'm very happy to support, commend my motion and to support councillor Coppinger's motion.
Councillor Coppinger.
Thanks very much. Fingal County Council is happy to work with any stakeholders working in this area. I haven't, in my time in this position, been approached by Sunnis that I can recall. So happy to arrange to meet with them and to see what we can do to support them. We're doing a similar project with Eve Nus, supporting them through the cast process. So happy to work with Sunnis on this and fully identify the need and the benefits of this. Our staff in the Housing Department work with victims of domestic violence every day of the week and actively work to make sure that they have safe accommodation. So we have people in our organisation who, on our behalf, are working on the coalface with this and deal with these very difficult situations. We are looking at the HMD form to see if that can be improved, to make it more fit for purpose. And yeah, no, happy to work with service providers in this area and look forward to bringing the Eve Nus proposal to you to provide a valuable resource in the North County area in Q1 2025.
Councillor Coppinger. Oh, sorry, councillor Donnelly.
Hi, sorry, I just wanted to clarify that the Domestic Violence Working Group actually sent a letter to Amara.org about a year ago.
Councillor Coppinger.
That letter was also mentioned to me by Sunnis that there hadn't actually been a reply to it as well. So just to say, like, I'd be happy to agree, but I'm not happy with the answer to the motion. Because if you actually flick further, scroll down, I think, like it says, the funding isn't under the remit, you know. It's just not looking like it's happy to really embrace. This is an emergency. Every single council in the country should be trying to do something about it. Now, safe houses haven't been mentioned by the manager at all. That is something that Fingal could discuss doing, you know, straight away, is providing. I was told by Sunnis that there are women from, say, Blanchardstown, out in Step aside, having to bring their kids out to Dublin 15 every day. You know, that makes it extremely difficult for somebody to not be tempted to go back into an abusive relationship. There's been five women in Northern Ireland murdered in six weeks. The North has the highest femicide rate in the whole of Europe. There hasn't actually been here for some time, but we know that it's been recognised by the government as an epidemic. So we have to treat it as an emergency, and the council has money. Like, let's not pretend that, you know, we're in the austerity era here now. There is money there, and it couldn't be more better spent than on this type of social housing. Like, even this, we have to increase the funding that we're giving Sunnis, because £500 a year wouldn't pay for bedding for numbers of families to use in accommodation, never mind pay for the upkeep of that accommodation. And they told me that one apartment out of the eight had been spruced up for a visit from the minister, but there's been no other real... Now, thankfully, they're going to be improved now. But I think I would like to just clarify, if I accept this, am I accepting the report? Because I want the wording of my own motion to be accepted.
So if you accept the report, then the motion is not agreed. If the motion is agreed, then the motion is agreed. So the choices are, you put it to a vote. If that's agreed, then it's the same as the motion passing. If you're accepting the report, you're accepting the report. It's different. You can agree it without the vote, yeah, and it's the same effect as if the motion was passed.
Yeah, well, I'm not really accepting the report because I don't think it embraces what I'm embracing in the motion.
You're not accepting the report by passing the motion. It's not the same thing. And if the motion is agreed, it's not the same as accepting the report, in any report.
Well, I'd ask that the motion would be agreed, and I would welcome if the manager would agree to meet Sunnis and to also look at the other aspects in the motion. I don't think any of them are unreasonable, given the crisis that we're facing.
Yes, so the motion will be passed, and then its effect is... And I think there is agreement there in relation to dealing with it. There's consideration in there, so passing the motion is the next step. And then afterwards, we engage our management to make sure the motion has an effect and to monitor the effect of the motion. So is the motion agreed? Okay. Both motions? Both motions agreed. Thanks. So that brings us to 30 conference... Conference report, there's no conference report, is there? No. Correspondence for noting: A, letter dated 10th of October 2024 from Donegal County Council, re-extradition procedures noted. B, letter dated 10th of October 2024 from Donegal Council, re-hedge cutting noted. Email dated 14th of October 2024 from Westmeath County Council, re-minister for Education, SPJA classes noted. Letter dated 15th of October 2024 from Roscomber County Council, re-minister, E Ryan School Transport. E, letter dated 15th of October from Roscomber County Council, re-minister, McConnell Log, roadside trees. Items 32, departmental ministry of correspondence. A, email dated 4th of October from Minister of State Sports Office, re-item 47, councillor Tom O'Leary, increasing funds for Fingal sport and community facilities via sports lotto funds noted. Motions of statutory functions, item 33, councillor Healy, conditions aimed at preventing multiple apartments, units being sold to a single buyer, seconded.
Councillor Healy.
Good. This motion is aimed at achieving something similar, but not exactly the same to what's happening in relation to detached and semi-detached houses. We have a restriction which we are imposing by planning conditions on foot of government guidelines on developers who are developing detached and semi-detached houses. And that is that they cannot put them all into a rental situation straight off. What this motion is proposing is that we would impose a similar condition, and the model of that condition is taken from those guidelines. But that it would be to be determined, taking into consideration the demand in the area, particularly the demand to purchase an apartment to move to from a larger dwelling. And, yeah. The issue here is that we are seeing apartment complexes being developed in areas of single-family houses, quite often large houses or semi-detached houses, three, four-bedroomed houses, with a lot of residents in those houses wishing to downsize to a smaller property. People who are not willing to sell their house in order to become a tenant in new apartments, but who would very much like to sell their house to buy an apartment. And what we're facing at the moment is a situation where the... Some of those apartment complexes are being taken entirely into rental, and they're not being made available for sale. There has been discussion about the need for this kind of rental setup in order to finance apartment developments. However, it is the case that many apartment developments are being developed without pre-financing by a future landlord. And, for example, there's one apartment development, or two apartment developments, under construction in the Hawthamahide area, where they are being financed. One of them is being financed by the Activate Ireland Fund, which is government money. And where the developer has said they haven't decided yet whether they're going to sell the apartments or put them all into rental. So there's a circumstance here where the landlord's demand risks keeping houses out of market, or apartments out of the market, which would be used for downsizing by local people, which would enable people to remain in their communities, which is what they very much want to do, and which would free up the housing that they're currently living in, which is larger than they need and which would benefit other people in the community. So that's the idea behind this motion. Good morning.
From my own point of view, since there are no other speakers, I think this is an excellent motion. I think we would have plenty of time during a variation process to discuss the actual merits of putting the proposal in. This motion is to start that process. So I think I'd be happy to agree it.
Councillor Hopkins.
Sorry, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just... Bring in the motion and to fully support it. And just to add one thing, I mean, this is something that our National Parliament wasn't able to achieve. But it's not just about downsizing, it's also for individuals who want to buy and live in an apartment. No, that's all right.
Yeah.
Yes. People downsizing, sorry. It's also giving the opportunity for anyone to buy an apartment. 95% of what we're building now in Dublin is built to rent, and people want to own their homes, and they're entitled to. I fully support this. Thank you.
Councillor Virchell.
Yeah, I'd support the motion and any other measures we and the national government can adopt to drive vulture funds out of the country, really. They're not a benefit to our society. They're ransacking us for profit, extortionate rents, you know. They've been, the red carpet has been laid out for them for the last 10 years, you know, with catastrophic consequences for society broadly. We need to call these out. They're parasites who have been invited in to feast on the housing crisis. Built to rent is one aspect of that. And although I support the motion, it's very minimalist, really. I mean, we need wholesale measures to get rid of these bootleggers who, you know, have poured into the country over many years now and are hoovering up vast quantities of rent and taking it offshore. You know, they're not a benefit to society. They're absolutely not a benefit to society. They were never needed. They were brought in on the back of the banking crash by the previous government. And people are paying a terrible price for this. You know, this ideology of profit over the needs of families to have a secure roof over their heads, an affordable one. Thanks.
Councillor Newman.
Yeah, just to be brief, I support the motion. And I would hope that maybe somewhere along the way we can address the situation of the commercialisation of residential housing estates. We have people that we live with, families living in an area. Somebody moves in, takes over a house, adds another house to it, and lets a rented accommodation put more pressure on the homes and the location, plus the Airbnb. So maybe somewhere along there, we can address that. Thanks.
I'm going to bring the manager in.
Well, councillor, just as the report sets out there, what councillor Healy is looking to do today is bring the resolution before you. This is the first step in the section 131A to begin the variation process. This is what I was discussing earlier on. So in order for us to prepare a report and present that to you in four weeks, we need three-quarters of the members to approve the resolution. So this is purely, if you vote on this this evening, this is purely to commence the start of that variation process. We deliberately haven't got into any of the pros and cons of the actual policy being sought to be put into the development plan. This is purely, from a procedural point of view, the ability to commence that process. And as I say, it needs three-quarters of the members to approve it.
Order or clarification? So if we initiate the development plan variation process, does that restrict it just to this one item? Or does that then open it up as if we've opened up the variation process? Does that then bring the ALSA lands in? Does that then bring other things that we may want to outline as a variation to the development plan? Does that then come into that process? Or is this its own trajectory on this motion? Thank you.
It's specifically on the wording there that's been put forward by councillor Healy. So the insertion in the development plan of the following 3, 5, 9.4. So that's specific requirement, that new policy, that would be the variation. And that would be just confined to the wording that's proposed there.
So if we were going to take it to a vote, proposing a roll call vote, councillor Healy? Oh, sorry, I propose to extend the meeting to finish this item proposed. Seconded, councillor Humphries, and agreed. Right. Councillor Healy.
Good morning, Tavera. I'd like to thank all the councillors for their support, and I'm grateful if you put it to a vote. Good morning.
I specifically looking for a roll call vote. So everybody having voted.
Thirty-four votes in favour, zero abstentions and zero against.
Thank you very much. And with that, does anybody want to accept any reports and motions just before we go? Councillor Donnelly, which number is that? Fifty water supply issues. Anybody else want to accept any reports? Anybody who doesn't expect to be back here the next time want to accept any reports? Maybe your last chance? Best of luck to everybody who is putting themselves forward for the big house. Well, nearly everybody.